Today's date, nineteen, uh, two thousand seventeen, the annual town meeting of the, uh, Ludenberg Town. I declare that the warrant has been promptly served and returned according to the records that are filed in the clerk's office. Uh, we have done a count, and we do have a forum which is counted Ludenberg as fifty people. At this point, I would ask you to stand, address the flag, and join me in the pledging meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to thank all the people in this town that dedicate a lot of time and energy, resources, that are either on an elected position or a volunteer position, um, and we do appreciate all the hard work that you do. Uh, if you didn't see them before, we have a talent bank form, we deliver colleagues and all that. Um, and if you're interested in volunteering for any capacity, please, then check one out, return it to anybody. These are also available on the town's website. Just come up and talk to somebody in any committee that you're interested in, or anybody on the select board, we would love to have you volunteer. We do have openings, openings and vacancies. We have vacancies on the path, we have Stormwater Task Force vacancy, agricultural vacancies, EDA vacancies. We have a need for people in elected positions on the Board of Health, the Civil Commission, and the Planning Board. So we do have a lot of openings, we need more talented people, and so that many of you are dedicated, talented people, and we would love to have you. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the meeting over just briefly to Mr. Toll.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to mention that this is Selectman Tom Alonso's last town meeting as a selectman. Tom's lived in, like, on Lancaster Avenue in Ludenberg with his wife Christine Foltz since nineteen ninety-eight. Tom served on the Finance Committee from two thousand three to two thousand five, has been a member of the Board of Selectmen since two thousand five, and served as chairman four times. Tom was on the Town Charter Review Committee in two thousand six, two thousand seven, the Municipal Whip who serviced the task force in two thousand eleven, the Cable Advisory Committee, two thousand fifteen through present, the Town Hall Clockwinder Group since two thousand three. Tom is a Ludenberg Boys and Girls Club Board Member since two thousand ten, and has been the host of the game show, Are You Smarter Than Our Six Graders, for five years. Tom, who currently serves on the School Building Committee, and he was the founding, eighth founding member of the Ludenberg Civic Forum in two thousand two through two thousand five. If I could please join me and thank you, Tom, for your service. Thank you.
Do I say a few words, I assume?
First, I'm looking for the button on the new mic. So, first line, I've did incredible research because I don't even know what some of those things. Uh, and I will say that this will be a new venue for the new game show, which is rescheduled for June second this year, after it was snowed out for over a year, so it could be a good segue. Uh, it really has been an honor and a pleasure to serve on this board with all my fellow current members and past members and all the people in all the boards, committees, commissions, and, uh, ad hoc committees that I've worked with in town, and working with so many wonderful people in the citizenry to help further the needs of the town and address every concern that I think came forward to us. Uh, I'm, I'm obviously going to miss it, but it was a pleasure serving you, and I really thank, uh, the Chair and, and everybody in the audience for those advice words. And, uh, I couldn't think of a better way, after the moderator has, has, uh, announced all the openings, I can't think of a better way to serve the town. And even for anybody's personal satisfaction, I can say that there's really no gratification, no way to explain the gratification you get when you work for a larger cause, and I would encourage anybody in this audience who doesn't already do so, as I look over the face of many of you who already are, uh, committees and, and boards and serve the town, but there really is no better way to do that. And the feeling you get back from the committee is really, uh, it's really priceless, so thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. To conform the ground rules to the meeting, please remove your hats from your indoors within the presence of the American flag. Turn off all your noise makers, such as cell phones, your beepers and the like, and that includes any verbal noise makers that are inappropriate for civil debate. By that I mean hissing, going, tolling, et cetera. All comments and questions are to be addressed to me, and I will seek an answer for you from the necessary boards, committees, moving parties, et cetera. It's not appropriate to refer to people specifically by their name, it's more appropriate in these settings to say the previous speaker, the moving party, uh, the select board, something of that effect. Your comments and questions should always be into microphones. The one in each one of the aisles is one up at the podium if you need that one. Stand in line, I will recognize you in order to the best that I can. I may call on the select boards of the Finance Committee, uh, out of order if I feel that we need an answer from them. Uh, if you're not able to get to the microphone, just let somebody know that's sitting near you, and we'll have the microphone brought to you. The only time anyone can simply just stand up and address the body is if there's a serious question about, um, procedural issues. Uh, at that point in time, you may stand and say, uh, point of order, and we will address that, but it should not be something just as a general question, it should be a serious procedural error. The moving party will speak first, we give an ad for time to present the article, and thereafter speakers will be allowed to address that. If you're allowed to come up and speak a second time, or if you need to, please keep your comments the second time, uh, to much less time. Amendments to articles more than just simple, uh, changes must be in writing, and there are forms in each one of the microphones, and there are forms up here if you need them, just so we can make sure that we have a, a clear record of any amendment that you've made. Moving the question or cutting off debate, uh, is something that must be done from the microphone, it must be seconded, it's not debatable, and it's a two-thirds majority, and I can call that out of order if I feel that there's still a lot of people who want to speak to a particular issue. Every article is put to a voice vote, uh, and I want to declare whether it is passed or failed based upon the two-thirds or the majority required. If people don't think I got it right, not that I've ever been wrong, but if nothing has got it right, seven people standing today, "I doubt it," and then we'll have a hand count. And the hand count will be done with your cards, so make sure that you've got your cards with you. Reconsideration of a vote that we've just had requires a majority vote. Either the prevailing party or the losing party may ask for reconsideration, and I mock allow a reconsideration of a vote if a lot of time has passed and the amount of people that are left in the, uh, in the auditorium has changed dramatically. Guests, people who are not voters in town, to be seated on my right, your left, down in the front, uh, with heaven sitting in the podium, it's, uh, and obviously they don't have voting cards. This town conducts its business according to a book called Town Meeting Time. One bill over the library, you can order them through the Moderators Association. It's a lot like Robert's Rules of Order, uh, designed to keep the meeting orderly and so that everybody's aware that it's conducted. We're not trying to keep you out of the process. If you want to get involved with any type of an article, if you want to put on the warrant in the future, if you have amendments, the things that you want to do with town meeting, just let us know, and we'll help you facilitate that particular process. Obviously, we're allowing food in the auditorium today, I want to encourage you to eat the donuts. If you must, you can have the fruit, uh, the coffee out there as well. Please make sure that you're picking up all of your food, because we're cleaning here since we have such a beautiful auditorium. The exits are marked if you need to go to the bathroom, the exits are marked over to my right, so if you want, once you've left, come back through that main door that you came in. If you didn't go up that door, you need to make sure you're always coming in through that door. At this point in time, I want to make sure that, uh, you understand that we have a consent budgets that we'll be going through, uh, we'll go through the budget process by putting on polls, um, so when we get to those, the, um, capital plan budget and the, uh, and the overall town budget, we'll go through how we're going to go through that process. This point in time, I think we're ready to begin our business, so we begin with Article One.
Honitor, I move that the town vote, yes, over Article One, having already accepted the regular written reports of the town offices and committees.
Is there a second? Selectman, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance.
Finance says no, money is left.
All right. Anyone want to debate whether the commission passes over? Seeing none, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, asked unanimously.
Article Two. Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Dinkson.
I move that the town vote to reauthorize the revolving funds to the Fire Department Conservation Commission, School Committee, Library, and Council on Aging for the purposes and spending limits as printed on the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Folks, this is on page eight of your warrant, this will show you where all the revolving funds are. Selectmen, what is your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Anyone want to debate the revolving funds, they're on page eight of the warrant. Seeing no one at the microphone, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, asked unanimously. Article Three, Mr. Alonso.
I move that the town vote to authorize in accordance, as mentioned in the law chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, E and a half, the Stormwater Task Force Revolving Fund, such fund to be credited with proceeds to the sale of rain barrels and composting bins. Funds need to be expended, expended for the acquisition of additional rain barrels and composting bins. The Stormwater Task Force may expend such funds without further appropriation. Expenditures from the revolving fund may not exceed five thousand dollars per year, without the approval of Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about this, Mr. Alonso.
This is a new requested Stormwater Task Force Revolving Fund for the purchase, as the was indicated in the article, to purchase additional rain barrels and compost bins for sale to and distribution to the citizenry.
Seeing no one at the microphone, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, asked unanimously. Article Four, Mrs. Burke.
I move that the town vote to authorize accordance of master and law chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, E and a half, the electrical, gas, plumbing, and inspection revolving fund. Such funds are credited with eighty-two point five percent of the fees collected from the library department, and eighty percent of the fees collected from plumbing and gas departments, and extended by the building department without further appropriation to the sole purpose of payment of all charges and fees related to the electrical, plumbing, and gas inspection fees. Expenditures from the revolving fund may not exceed forty-six thousand dollars per year without the approval of Board of Selectmen and Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about the article, Mrs. Burke.
This is a new revolving fund that is requested by the town manager. Each year, this is what you have to hit in the electrical inspector account. This will ensure that a percentage of the fees collected goes to the inspector.
Seeing no one at the microphone, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, asked unanimously. Article Five, Ms. Luck.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety cents, for payment of prior year expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Honitor, we're having problems here, though, Miss Luck's microphone has been, went off.
Mrs. Luck, your microphone's not working.
It's not working.
Is it working now?
It's not. It's the same way. Just got to put this part back here.
Can you hear me now? It's like a commercial.
Selectmen, recommend approval.
And you can see the article on the board, right? Everybody knows what we're quoting on the article by the warrant. All the articles printed up on the board, Mrs. Luck just read it exactly as it is. Well, actually, not exactly. That's the explanation is also on the bottom of it. So there's the article, Selectmen recommend approval, we seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about the article, Mrs. Luck. Board of Mayor Town.
Town Council.
Now, see, you've got to see that your mic is on. If it's not on, then you're not on. There you go.
Town Council will explain.
Okay. Make sure your mic's on, here.
This represents retirement deductions for a, a school employee who was actually called to active duty, and per the federal and state statutes, the town is required to pay
Any questions? Seeing no one at the microphone, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, asked unanimously. Article Six, Mr. Toll.
I move that the town vote to transfer from line six, health insurance, the sum of thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars, transfer from line thirteen, reserve fund, the sum of ninety-eight thousand dollars, transfer from line fourteen, unemployment expansion, the sum of eight thousand dollars, transfer from line seventeen, annual audit, the sum of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, transfer from line twenty-one, town manager's salary, the sum of seven thousand dollars, and from line seventy-five, extra benefits, the sum of forty-five thousand dollars, and to transfer to line three, interest temporary loans, the sum of one hundred fifty dollars, and to line forty-nine, wiring, wiring inspector, the sum of eleven thousand dollars, and to line fifty-three, annual control, the sum of ten thousand six hundred dollars, and to line seventy, snow removal, the sum of one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, and to line seventy-four, council on aging, the sum of three thousand one hundred dollars, to amend the amounts voted under Article Fifteen of the May seventh, two thousand sixteen annual town meeting, Article One of the August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen special town meeting, and Article One of the November twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen special town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about the article, Mr. Toll.
This is the budget adjustment article on the orange handout, and the town and town will manage it personally.
Excellent. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I feel we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, asked unanimously. Welcome by ten o'clock. Article Seven, Mr. Toll.
I move that the town vote to raise or appropriate the sum of three hundred forty-three thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, and transfer from the free cash, the sum of two thou- two hundred ninety thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, for a total appropriation of six hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred seventeen dollars, to fund the FY eighteen capital plan, as appearing in the capital planning report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Folks, this is on page four of your warrant, all the things that are listed in the capital planning report, broken down by where, uh, and how much, before the items is, uh, is listed there. Article Seven, please, the capital planning report, somebody told me you wanted to talk about this, so, so whenever you get up to the microphone, folks, I don't think I said this earlier, after, introduce yourself, tell us the, uh, street where you live, and every time you get up to the microphone, reintroduce yourself, because we're recording, it's gonna make sure we have a record. Go ahead, young lady.
My name is Ronald.
All right, so that microphone's not working for me.
My name is Ronald Fiona, I live at one eighty-one Reservoir Road. Um, I would like to, maybe possibly amend this article to, um, include the police department request for the ATV, and remove playgrounds, and I'm not really sure where we can get the other five thousand dollars. But, um, I actually spoke to the chief about this item, and I feel that it's really important. Um, we have lots of trails and inaccessible areas in town, um, and currently, the police and fire department, or other emergency responders, have no, um, way of reacting quickly to, um, an emergency situation, whether it's, um, you know, calls they get, as far as people being on the trails and they shouldn't be, or serving the land, or if there was a case where someone was missing, and there was a medical emergency. So I feel like this is important, I need to get on there. It's been requested for, I think, three years, and it would also include a cot, so that if there was a medical emergency in the trails, um, emergency responders would be able to respond quickly to that.
Stay there. So, you want to purchase an ATV, and how much would that be?
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Seventeen thousand. The next part of your, um...
Remove the twelve thousand dollars from the playground.
From the playground.
And, I didn't realize that has come up with the other five thousand dollars.
So just so everybody understands, uh, anytime we deal with our budget and, and adjustment story, we're not required at this meeting to leave here with a balanced budget. However, you won't get your state aid if you don't have a, a balanced budget, this is mentioned in the state. So it is best, I would recommend it, that anytime we're making adjustments in our, anywhere on our finances, that we balance out where the money's come from. So, so your amendment, uh, your, your motion to amend, was that second?
Second.
Now it's been seconded. Okay, so now we can debate and discuss the proposed amendment to the capital plan. So I think you've said somewhat of what you wanted to talk about.
Yes.
Okay. Stay right there, you never know, people might have a question, don't go far. Um, anybody else want to discuss, debate, comment on her motion?
Is this working? Donald?
I can hear you.
Dave Brock, is that working? Dave Brock, you said three hundred and thirty-three West Street?
Yep.
Uh, what? Which playground project are we talking about? Is anyone else?
Mr. Toll, can you address capital planning?
Just, just run it quick to address that.
This particular amount of money is going to be targeted at the Wallace Park Playground. Uh, you noticed earlier in the year, or you may not have noticed, that most, all of the playground equipment was removed because of, um, standards, playground standards, and it was just too dangerous to have them there. Um, so this is the beginning of a town-wide project to, um, rebuild, offer more, more, uh, activities for younger children than was started with, with the Wallace Park.
Thank you. I'd just comment on that, I know there are a lot of, uh, interested people in the Willam area who have been organizing to try and save that park and get it rejuvenated. Uh, I don't know many of them are here today, but they just recently had an event, uh, last weekend, uh, party, a fundraiser, uh, I think just a general interest, uh, party, uh, to see if they could, how they could help and help plan that out. I'm not opposed to a, a new piece of equipment that I think is vital for the police department, but I just question whether that's a place we should take down. Because those kids out in that area need some of the building.
Mr. Moderator?
Right, I'd just like to say as well that, uh, you know, from, from our, our point of view, we put this through the capital plan because we thought it was an important thing to do, and, um, whether fair is the word or not, we also support the police department, we support their, their projects and their, the things they put before capital plan. I, I just don't know about the equity in putting one against the other, uh, sort of distant end.
Okay.
For Mr. Honitor of California.
How about your name and where you live, because no, I know it.
Oh, okay. Dave McDonald, I live in Ludenberg, I'd like to refer this question to the chief when we open his comments on.
Chief, can you comment about this, please?
Um, I don't want anything I say that, uh, contributors not appreciated and support on this, uh, on this issue, uh, but what I would say is that, as, uh, Honitor alluded to, this is an important piece of equipment, uh, but my, uh, mantra is always that, you know, we have to prepare for any emergency. Uh, if we're not prepared, uh, to respond to an emergency, then the public's gonna think that, uh, that the police department was infected. I can't have the public thinking that the police department was infected. I put this on the capital plan about, actually, four years ago. I applied for two grants, uh, although the grant administrator was very helpful in trying to get us this one, purchased this piece of equipment, just didn't fit the grant criteria at the time, uh, I still reach out for money to fund this and open, then maybe we can do it by grant money. I would say that the cap- the capital plan is something I think we spend probably more time on than the budget. Uh, we work, the Capital Plan Committee boards very closely, uh, together, uh, to try to come up with priorities, and these purchases are based on the priorities. Now, with respect to the playground, uh, that was also kind of a priority for the police department, because obviously, uh, you know anything about that broken windows theory, um, we have a playground in, uh, disrepair, and it's gonna become a place where, uh, maybe a criminal on that might, uh, take hold, and the police department can have that as well. So with this list, we all kind of put our heads together, and came up with, uh, with our priorities, and that's what we ended up with right there. I plan on putting that, uh, ATV back on the capital plan next year, uh, and hopefully, in the meantime, hopefully I can get some funding from another source, uh, because I, obviously, the last thing I'm going to is birth taxpayers, we don't have. We're always looking for money elsewhere. I would appreciate your support next year on that matter, although if we won't get the money, I think it's a really important, uh, piece of equipment for us to have, because we cannot respond out in some of the, um, conservation areas, some of even the private, uh, privately owned lands, where, uh, our resident old colleagues said that somebody's out there, uh, either, uh, maybe staying in attack, or, or maybe tearing up the land with one of their own motorcycles or ATVs, and they want to just respond to that. Again, if we can't respond to that, they think that we're infected. It's just that, you know, sometimes we only have a couple people on the road, and we can't get out of a car and run to, you know, mile into the woods, uh, even the police department side of the road, uh, and then expect to respond to an emergency call and report back to, you know, run back to the police staff, and, uh, respond to an emergency call. So that's, that's the reason we're asking for this. Uh, we received a trailer from Homeland Security, which, a couple of years ago, for free, which we hoped we could use to transport ATV, in the event, in the event that we did, uh, we did purchase one, but, uh, again, anything I say here, Honitor, I appreciate the support a hundred percent. I wish you'd come back at the next town meeting, uh, if they were to ask for this again, uh, but the Capital Planning Committee does work very hard to come up with these priorities, uh, and again, I fully support the playground project, you know, for my own selfish reasons, because obviously, we're trying to keep the, uh, you know, trying to keep the climate down, and it's probably, so, um, again, I feel like I'm, I'm turning my back, and I'm not, I want the support, but I think it's gonna have to wait, honestly, so much, yeah. Thank you.
Your, your vote, go ahead.
I just wanted to make it clear, I wasn't trying to pick on the playground, I was just trying to find the most ethical trade that I could on the list.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, you'll be got one, that's fine, you're first, good. Your name again.
Dave McDonald, I live in Ludenberg, one question, and this moderator, the town manager, is there any way, you know, with the budget, try to accommodate the chief, and we're all strong supporters of local corporations, but also, it's a plain property, and the good work from the east, so, uh, that is gonna be an active trail, I think, this year, and coverage on there, I can, I can, thank you.
Yes, I hear, we have pretty chance to get up here. Mr. McDonald, why don't you take him somewhere else? Mr. McDonald, why don't you take him somewhere else?
Okay, uh, there is available free, unexpended free cash that is gonna fall back towards next year's free cash. So that would, if we amended the Capitol Plan and made additions to it, it would affect our next year's free cash.
Sure. This is Bob Martin, 54 Longwood Drive. Chief, I'm just trying to get a clarification, seeing you, you were bouncing back and forth. Are you recommending the playground at this time, and then pushing off the ATV, or the ATV now, and pushing off the playground?
I'm gonna ask support the playground project, uh, at this point, and I hope that the, you know, the, uh, we can, uh, have the, we can start by ATV.
Mr. Moderator? If I might, I just, just for clarification, station purposes, I'd like to just mention that, uh, every year, the Capitol Plan Committee gets requests from the different departments in town. The total request usually averaged a million to a million and a half dollars, not counting any large fire apparatus, et cetera. And this is a prioritization, uh, after talking with the various department heads, the chiefs, et cetera. Uh, I'm not even sure, we, we clearly support almost everything on the list, but I'm not sure the ATV might have been even the next one up, if, if, if we're gonna re-debate the priorities. It's a, it's a tough thing we do every year, and we do get input from department heads and chiefs, et cetera. Just to keep it in the process. Thank you. Just not enough money to go around? Go ahead.
Just one, one, oh, sorry, Ron, let me go, one, one, rest for a moment. Just one more comment. Um, it would be helpful, um, if the Capitol Plan meetings were televised, then I wouldn't have had to try to, um, guess at what the justification was for each item. So, I, I just feel like those meetings should be more, um, you know, they should be televised.
Thank you. Okay, so there is a motion to amend the Capitol Planning article. And we don't have it written yet, ma'am, but we may need it. To purchase an ATV for seventeen thousand, to take that money and zero out the twelve thousand from the playground, and to seek at some point in time the additional five thousand from another line item from another source. So just on the motion to amend, seeing no one else at the microphone up in favor, ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Voting on the motion to amend the article.
Moderator, motion for recommendation to the board, please.
Well, next time you can get up to the microphone and ask for it, but that's okay. I can sit here, Mr. Passio, so be welcome. Selectman, your recommendation?
Board of directors, not recommend approval.
Finance Committee, have you thought about this or discussed about this?
Please have, I mean, uh, do not recommend.
No recommendation. There you go. So, as a player, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of motion to amend, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Motion is defeated. We're now back to Article Seven, debating, any more debate on Article Seven. Seeing no one at the microphone up, but ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, pass unanimously. Article Eight, Eversall.
Mr. Moderator? I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate thirty-four million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-six cents to transfer ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the CEPIC receipts reserved for appropriation, transfer nine hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents to the sewer enterprise fund, transfer fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars from reserve for MSBA debt, and transfer sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars from water betterment, to defray the charges and expenses for the town for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen of thirty-five million, six hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents, and to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officials of the town, and any other items included in the budget the town may have.
Thank you. There's second?
Second.
Second. Selectman, your recommendation?
Selectman, recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. So what we're gonna do, folks, we're gonna have Ms. Lamu make the presentation on the budget. Since she's finished making the presentation on the budget, we're gonna go through the major categories, the totals, if totals or subtotals of the major categories, we'll go through the budget that way. So what'll happen is that I'll read off that category, and again, this is on page, uh, sixteen of your warrant, where you budgeted. Final column, on the right-hand side, labeled FY18 Town Manager's Recommendation. That's the budget that you're going through. So all of them, each one of the categories, sub to the main category. If you wanted to discuss one of the three categories, we'll call out from you, seek whole, and then we'll know you wanna come back to that particular category. When we get to the end, we'll go through the holes, we'll discuss them, and then we'll go down the whole budget. Just because you don't say whole on a particular category, doesn't mean that's set cap. It just means we're trying to put a place mark into the areas that we want to discuss. So after all of that, explanation, Ms. Lamu.
Hello, everybody. So if you can please take out the green handout, and we'll click, and we'll be referring to pages sixteen through nineteen in the warrant booklet. So just to tell you a little bit about the budget process that we follow, it follows a calendar. And the budget worksheet sets out in January to all the departments. This year, the departments were requested to submit a level service budget, as well as above level service budget. The departments submit back their budgets at the end of January. The town manager for the charter makes recommendation to finance in mid-February. And the finance committee meets with all the departments and reviews their budgets during the months of February, March. And a final recommendation is made by finance in April. And we stand here today to approve the budget the first Saturday of May. The recommendation before you funds all contractual union, non-union salary increases, and it reflects level services with some exceptions. The balanced budget proposal is based on using recurring revenues for operating costs, meaning there's no request to draw on free cash or stabilization for the operating budget. This budget proposal meets and exceeds the town's financial policies. One of the financial policies is to put five percent of the operating budget back into stabilization, which it does. It also adds deposits free cash into a special purpose stabilization fund to pay for future large capital needs, as identified in Capitol Plan, such as fire apparatus. And the amount recorded in the budget for that, under a separate article, is two hundred thousand. It also starts to fund the town's OPAP liabilities, an amount of hundred thousand, and that is, um, other post-employment benefits. So if you look at a breakdown of our revenue after, as you can see, the largest portion, the sixty-five percent of our revenue comes from property tax, with the next highest percent, twenty-two percent from state aid. The sources of revenue include property tax, state aid money, local receipts, and other available funds. Property tax includes residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property tax. State aid includes Chapter Seventy, public elementary and secondary school funding, unrestricted general government aid, among other categories. Local receipts covers motor vehicle excise taxes, penalties, and interest collected by the tax collector, fees from various departments, and licenses from different departments, solar net metering payments, fines, and local option fuel tax. Other available funds include free cash, which is the unexpended balance from the previous fiscal year, and that is certified by the Department of Revenue. Indirect costs charged back to the sewer for town services and their debt payments. And Lunenburg receives a payment each year from MSBA for its old school project, an amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. So to get to where our property tax is calculated, you take your prior year base, which is twenty-two million, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, add two and a half percent per proposition two and a half, which is an additional five hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Add in the estimate for new growth, which we're estimating at three hundred thousand this year, and the excludable debt from previous projects. We have no current overrides or exclusions in this budget. And that amount is two million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, for a total of property tax of twenty-five million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. The estimated new growth for fiscal eighteen is three hundred thousand one hundred and reference, which is a conservative estimate. The new growth figure for the last two fiscal years was conservative, and came in about a hundred thousand over the estimate in fiscal sixteen, and a hundred and eighty-eight thousand over the estimate for fiscal seventeen. And this chart shows, is from the Board of Assessors, just shows you what, um, new growth we're looking at for this coming year. So there's compared to last year's, change chart, certificate, uh, there's one more certificate of occupancy issued, four more open permits, two more additional permits with anticipated construction by June thirtieth. Another revenue source is state aid, so this proposal is based on the governor's budget for state aid. The governor has advocated for additional Chapter Seventy money, Chapter Ninety money, as well as unrestricted general government aid for cities and towns, and this is evident in his budget proposals. The governor's proposal includes thirteen point nine percent more for Chapter Nine, Chapter Seventy funding, and an additional three point eight percent for unrestricted general government aid. The proposal also includes forty-F funding, which is smart growth, which, there's only two communities in Massachusetts that receive this, Lunenburg and Lakeville. And I have included it in the state aid revenue with the expectation, if we do not receive it in the final state budget, it would be removed on both the expense and revenue side. This chart's a breakdown of how the state aid has been calculated over the years and approved. So as you can see, over fiscal seventeen, the projected total increased substantially, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Local receipts is another revenue source, and local receipts increased one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and six dollars, or five point nine percent from fiscal sixteen to seventeen. Local receipts includes motor vehicle excise tax, licenses, permits, fees, fines, and investment income. This can be an elastic revenue, which can change depending on the economy. So if more people are buying cars, that will change the amount that we receive for motor vehicle excise. It also includes solar revenue we're receiving, increased to twenty thousand dollars for next year. In this budget, the estimate for local receipts, we're using two point five percent increase for motor vehicle excise, and two percent for all other estimated local receipts. So other available funds. The MSBA, we receive five hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Water and sewer betterment, which is fully funded associated debt and related costs for the water and sewer, sewer and price fund, the indirect costs. Prior year unexpended articles, which this year is zero. Free cash appropriation to offset capital items, OPAP liabilities, and the regular stabilization fund, as well as transferred to a special purpose stabilization fund, for a total of six hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. To show you what the breakdown of the use of free cash for this budget, we started off with a certification of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Article Five, which was already voted on, used twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents. Article Seven, which was just voted, used two hundred and ninety thousand and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. We'll be asking to use eighty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars for the regular stabilization fund on Article Nine. In Article Ten, we will ask for two hundred thousand to be transferred to state special purpose stabilization fund. Article Eleven left for a hundred thousand to be transferred to the OPAP trust fund. So we have an unappropriated balance of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents. So this will fall towards next year's free cash. On the expenditure side, expenditure is a reflection of the cost of providing level services to residents of all ages in our community, visitors traveling, or doing business in Lunenburg, and maintaining and improving our facilities. At the town, we provide services to students, we provide help in human services to seniors and veterans, recreational services, and public safety to all. This budget focuses on service levels, not the number of employees. And the balance of the goal of budget is to provide the best level of services given the available resources. You referred to your green handout, and this, on the expenditure side, which is the right-hand side, in the green sheet, it's broken down by departments, includes retirement assessment, our non-appropriated costs, which is charity sheet, offset charges, loans for abatements, and tax title, as well as the sewer enterprise fund, solid waste disposal enterprise fund, and other warrant articles with a financial impact, such as OPAP and the special purpose stabilization fund. Budget before you provides for additional funding in general government, that is services under the tax collector and assessors office to recruit new growth, for costs for small claims support. Also includes increased backup for our IT, for proper backup, includes one additional police officer, one additional firefighter EMT, including training costs, an additional fifty thousand more than fiscal seventeen for our pavement management, nine thousand for our outreach worker, to make it fully funded by the town and, um, not paid partially through a grant. It includes three thousand for the library for reclassification, for additional free hours for one staff member, and it recommends the center and tenants and school committees record in the budget. This chart is a breakdown of our debt service. So there's exempt debt and non-exempt debt. The total appropriation for our debt is four million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So as you can see, the non-exempt debt is two million, sixty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, and exempt debt is two million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And just for, uh, no, exempt debt is what is taxed outside proposition to announce. So another expenditure that the town has is, it's called unclassified, and this includes insurances. So this budget has a ten percent increase for police and fire injured on duty and workers' compensation insurance, five percent increase for general liability insurance, and initially we were faced with a twelve percent renewal for our health insurance, but it came in at five point six three percent, so that was good news. The net impact to municipal active and municipal school retirees' insurance is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and the net impact to school active employees' health insurance is a hundred and twenty-two thousand. The renewals for the retirees are based on a calendar year, so this is an estimate based on last year. It will be at eight point nine percent. It will be an eight point nine percent estimate for medics two, eight point three nine percent for managed flu, and eighteen point nine percent increase for Medicare. So our retiree health insurance is our largest portion of our insurance cost. The recommendation is that the public employee committee should examine plan design changes to reduce our fiscal eighteen renewal costs. This chart just is a breakdown of our membership of who is in Worcester County Retirement, are active and retired employees. So we have approximately sixty active town employees, ninety-six school active employees, and one sewer active employee, about forty-five retired town members, and thirty-eight retired school members. The assessment this year will be one million, one hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is a five point two percent increase, higher than fiscal seventeen. And this includes a early discount payment the town receives if the bill is paid in July, and that's twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. To break down the education expense, the Lunenburg Public Schools budget proposed is nineteen million, six hundred and two thousand and forty-nine dollars, a six point nine percent increase, which there's another line item for a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars that I referenced earlier, which is the forty S smart growth money that if the, you do not receive in the state budget, that it would be reduced. And the Monmouth City Technical School assessment, which is eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, for a reduction of one point four percent for a total education budget of twenty million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Some highlights from the public state budget for personnel. The addition of our district-wide maintenance position, a part-time school psychologist at Turkey Hill, a position that was hard time to move to full-time for a middle school teacher, adding twelve days to the high school guidance secretary for scheduling, and an addition of a humanities teacher at the high school. The reductions were four paraprofessional positions, a seventh grade foreign language position, and Turkey Hill music from full to part-time. On the non-personnel side, increases and decreases. There was an additional increase of in transportation of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, which was further contract. The health insurance line added three hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars, which included a five point six three percent increase for health insurance of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and also additional two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollar reimbursement from fiscal seventeen health insurance overage that was paid on the school choice funds. It also is an increase, there's an increase in special education tuition of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Addition of thirty-six thousand in the technology line, because it was previously in the capital plan, and contracted services for the new field of nineteen thousand, two hundred. Some reductions that were seen in this budget were in natural gas, a reduction of thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. A reduction of a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars for electricity, and for curriculum adoption, seventy-nine thousand. The capital budget that was approved, the approval included priority one recommendations from the capital planning committee. The capital planning committee received a total of two million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars in capital requests from all departments for fiscal eighteen. Due to some of the large items the town will be faced to replace in the near future, such as fire apparatus, I would recommend we create a special purpose stabilization fund to put aside money for these for future capital purchases. And this year's capital requests were paid out of both free cash and appropriations. This chart is a effect of the tax rate for the current, this budget proposal. Given the recommended changes to the budget, the impact on the base tax rate without debt exclusions would be approximately thirty-two cents in tax rate. And with the debt exclusions, it would be approximately two dollars and fifteen cents for a total tax rate of twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents, which is a change of thirty cents over the fiscal seventeen tax rate. You also have, as in your handout, on the backside of the orange sheet, is a chart that you can figure on the average tax rate. Some adjustments that were made since the budget was presented in February. Our free cash, we originally estimated before it was certified by U R to be at nine hundred thousand, came in at eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And this budget proposes to use six hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars of the free cash. Our health insurance renewal originally was estimated at twelve percent increase for active employees, even at a five point six three percent increase. And our estimates for medics two is eight point nine one percent, Medicare eighteen point oh two percent, and managed flu eight point three nine percent. Our money tag originally be estimated at three point five percent increase. The actual assessment was a reduction of one point four percent. Our snow and ice deficit, as we went along through the season, it grew to approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And the fiscal seventeen budget adjustment, Article number six, transferred surpluses to cover a hundred and sixty-six thousand of that deficit. The rest will be paid out of end-of-year transfers. So to conclude, this budget represents fully funding all contractual union and non-union salary increases. It's a balanced budget that does not use free cash or stabilization for the operating budget. It maintains level services with some exceptions, and includes planning for future capital and liability costs. So the next step is we are asking for your approval for the budget. The budget, the state budget, is looked at by the Senate, and they endorse one by the end of May, goes to conference committee by June thirtieth. An approved upstate budget will be submitted by July. And any final adjustments that may be in reflection of the state budget can be made at the fall special town meeting.
Hey, did you repeat that?
Mr. Alonzo, did I ask for selection recommendation?
Selecting recommendation approval.
Thank you.
I understand you're repeating.
And probably after. Let me go through the categories, you stay right there, okay? So again, this begins on page sixteen of the warrant. You're looking at the calls to the farthest right. I'm gonna go through and call it out. If you wanted to start with a particular category from your seat, you see a lot of holes, and then we'll get back to that particular area. But just because it got passed over doesn't mean it's been voted on. And just because it was passed over, you might think, lady, you want to have a question? Certainly welcome to do that. Total maturing debt, four million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Total general government unclassified, two million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Total general government, one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Just a moderate year old.
That's a hold on that one, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, you have a hold on the general government unclassified.
Well, you gotta say it loud.
That was the one. I don't know, I'm going to want you to stop.
Now I'm just, well, how about you stand up, Mr. Remarino, and tell me what you thought. You want a hold on which general category?
Okay, I like a hold, Mr. Moderator, John Rankin, three fourteen downtown road. I would like a hold on total government unclassified.
That's it.
Specific to line number six.
I don't need to know that yet, but thank you. Total central purchasing, fifty-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Subtotal police, one million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Subtotal fire, eight hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and nine cents. Subtotal radio watch, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Subtotal other protection, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Total protection, two million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Total health and sanitation, seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Total DPW, one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Total facilities and buildings, six hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents. Total solid waste recycling, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Subtotal council on aging, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-four dollars, seventy-eight cents. Subtotal veterans, hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total assistance, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Total school, twenty million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Hold? Hold on total school. Total library, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Or total, as stated in the warrant, thirty-five million, six hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. Okay, so the first rule was on total general government unclassified. So let's just go in that order. Sir.
I just had a general question on the outreach.
Give the name and address again.
In Brockview, seven thirty-three West Street. What's the outreach employee?
Okay, Ms. Leview, outreach employee.
So that would be under general government. That was for the council on aging, their outreach worker. It's currently in this budget, it's partially funded through grant. We're proposing to fully fund it through town appropriation because the grant reimbursement amount is unsure.
Sir, Mr. Chairman John Rankin, three fourteen downtown road. Point clarification, if you could have it. With regard to group health insurance specifically to retirees, we're highly sensitive to this. Are we fully accruing for the retirees' healthcare at this time of week? Each year, each employee is, we know is going to receive a certain number of funds over their retirement period. Are we fully accruing for that right now on an annual basis?
That's it.
So that's broken down. Well, that's broken down, so there's Worcester County Retirement, which is their pension, which we receive an assessment every year on.
Does that pension include healthcare?
Yeah, so the health, the group health insurance line doesn't include retiring health insurance that's paid out. But we also have a liability amount through, which is called other post-employment benefits, which includes health insurance for retirees. And that's something that you'll see in one of the next articles, that we're asking to put money into the trust fund to start putting money away for that liability.
So we have not been asked.
This will be the first time that we'll.
This first time, so we've been kicking it down the road so much.
The trust fund was created in two thousand and ten, which a lot of towns say even towns did at that stage. It's a large, unreal number when you look at it, the liability amount. So it looks good that we here are investing quite money.
Is it fully funded based on a go-forward basis? It's not. So we're underfunding it, so we're creating a liability that essentially we're kicking down the road, and we're not addressing the bills that we know will be coming due, just spending the money now. I hire employees, is that correct?
This year's budget starts to put money into that fund.
Is it fully powering?
Not fully. It would be, I think, a million dollars for the annual cost or more.
I would submit we're underfunding our actual expenses, our real expenses in terms of anticipating pools. I know when you're in the business world, if you sell a product, you warranty it for three years, you have to create a warranty from that period and you take out of that year's profits, because you're gonna pay for that. It's the same thing, if we're trying to hire an employee, you pay him for that year, we're also creating a liability for the next fifteen. I just want to make sure that we're not kicking it down the road so badly that we will, we're leaving a bomb for our kids. So I guess you said we're gonna talk about this in the next hour and a half?
Yeah.
Okay, but we are not fully paying our debts right now.
Not what is identified by the actuarial study.
Stay right there, Mr. Remarino. Finance committee.
I just wanted to speak to, the finance committee has been receiving actuarial recommendations for a long time. We've been looking to try to fund the OPEC liability for a long time. And this is the first year that we've had an opportunity to actually put money into the fund. We recognize that it's an ongoing issue. We're trying to be more aggressive about getting to it, but I think there's been a long period of non-union being able to fund the current. But the other issue is that when an actuary reports on what the potential liability is, it fluctuates with planned changes, it fluctuates with the number of employees you have, how old are we, young, your demographic, all of these things come into play. We do recognize that it's an issue, we are trying to more aggressively go after it. And certainly one of the reasons why we're pushing for the OPEC trust, the free cash go into that is to start to address that.
Do we have a field for their underfunded liability right now?
It's, we have thirty million, which is not real number. And the reason why it's not real number is that when you look at how, on the page you go that we're currently using, it's, it's not, I guess what I would encourage people to do is, sometime in the next few months, we will have another actuary presentation. It will be televised, and the actuary will come and speak to what the liability is down the road. And it's reported right now just as a hypothetical, really, because we really don't know what it is. But when we look at what it's really gonna cost per year, it's not as scary as the total numbers. So it's, it's something we're aware of, it's something that we're trying to make sure gets addressed, and we're being more aggressive at going at it. But it's one of those numbers that is really hard to.
Does the finance committee believe, they should be, we should be funding more of that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We also believe we should be funding many things.
Right, right.
But I think, no, we do, we definitely understand that we don't want to be tagging people with this as an issue down the road. And we are trying to make sure that people are aware that this is something that we are looking at very closely, just as we're looking at the effect of having to spend a couple of million dollars on big fire safety equipment impacts the capital budget, and why we're looking at that funding that stabilization fund as well. So it's, I don't know if anybody else would like to speak to that for the finance committee, but we're aware that it's a liability. We're definitely invested in making sure that we're more aggressive about that going forward.
Right, so we're more aggressive, but just to make the point again, we're not fully funding even at a regular rate, is that what we're thinking of?
That's correct.
Stay right there, Mr. Remarino. Mr. Alonso, and then I'll get to you.
So I just want to bring out a few points, Mr. Remarino. So that, number one, the issue of the OPEC liability that we're talking about. of the OEPED liability that we're talking about and the share of the finance committee we just talked about is not unique to Lunenburg. So this is a statewide issue. And it came about because those benefits were paid on an as you needed them basis. Nobody put things away. And the state decided as the actuarial numbers that we just talked about got so high that states were going to be required, that towns and municipalities were going to be required to put things away. So that has been addressed and the state is putting together a program, I think it's a twenty-five or a thirty-year program, that we have that time to be fully funded. So we are on the beginning curve as we are, as many towns and cities in the Commonwealth are, to get to that. So I just want to be clear to the people in the audience that this is not something that we, Lunenburg alone, have fallen behind on. It was never really mandated, never really addressed in any formal way until recent years, I'd probably say in the last eight to ten years. So that's where we are. This is the outburst deposit and then will be required as time goes on to catch up so that at some point certain, like I said, twenty-five to thirty years, that we will be fully funded at that point.
Mr. Toll.
Mr. Alonso said pretty much what I wanted to say. It's not unique to this town. It is an actuarial situation. And just the fact that we're addressing it is considered the best practice in the audit field. We're paying close attention to developments across the state. We will certainly meet our short-term obligations. And we're beginning to fund according to state guidelines for long-term obligation.
Mr. Chairman, a question from the finance committee. Do you believe that we should put more of that now? And should we think we are putting license and stabilization fund or rainy day fund, start paying our bills now?
I'm... That's your answer. They're addressing a lot more.
One thing that I want to point out is that we also have an unfunded pension liability. The state has mandated that cities and towns fund, fully fund the pension liability over a period of years. That program is already in place. As Mr. Alonso mentioned, they're also planning to put in place a program to fully fund the OEPED liability. This is actually the first year we've had anybody to fund this liability. And we're not unique.
Do we have any kind of estimate of our unfunded pension liability?
I'm not sure what that means. But we're on a, we're on a program to become fully funded on the pension liability. I think it's like, it's like future, future expenditure, but it's not in a great proportion that we go towards funding that liability. Would it be possible, and is that meeting the, the standard?
Speaking to the pension liability, that comes out of Worcester County, and actually we're already addressing that and we're already getting to that, so there wouldn't be an additional amount on top of that to fully fund the pension liabilities. The, the OEPED piece, the reason why we wouldn't want to strike or attach the other stabilization fund is really because that fits to our, our double A plus status and we don't want the interest rates to boil up on any of the borrowing we currently have out there by trying to, you know, take computer tape off. The other is that currently we're managing the health insurance costs as they come up. The, we could potentially be looking at putting more and more into OEPED. The one thing that we feel very comfortable about is that if it came up that we had a really big health insurance increase, we could draw from that any time, that stabilization fund, to pay health costs. So we're certainly considering it. Would we like to put more in there now? We would like to put more into a lot of stabilization funds. But I think at this point, though, what the town manager has recommended with not using some of the free cash that was available this year is, is making sure that going forward we have free cash for next year that we could look at making sure that we're continuing to put in. We do recognize it as a, definitely a priority. We also recognize capital issues as a big priority because we really need to be maintaining those things that we're spending big money on now so that we don't have to spend big money again in the future. But I don't know if anybody else in the finance committee wanted to speak to this, but basically that's our position on it. We would like to be able to do a lot of things that the town wants to do. I think we would support the stabilization fund activity that the town manager has recommended for those reasons. And again, I would say that the first actuarial meeting I sat through was three years ago, so it's time again. And while it is a very big number, it doesn't take into account where we are in thirty years as a town. So it's, it's not as frightening a number as it may appear to be, but it can get there. So yes, we will be looking more closely at, and we do look at the total position cost of an employee when we take on a new employee.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Excellent. This is a great time to say that in February, when they're putting together their budget, all the way from the country.
My, this part, it's difficult for normal drive. I had a couple of comments on that, but it's a little bit too confusing at this point, so.
Excellent. Okay. So we're still on that general category that we started with. Do you want to address that, sir?
No, at this point, I'm...
Talking about general government unclassified, did you want to talk about that or that category?
No.
Okay. And Darby, did you have something you want to discuss on that category?
I just wanted, Darby, I'm the director of council on aging, and I just want to explain what the definition of an outreach worker is.
Excellent. What's an outreach worker?
An outreach worker is basically being a social service person in town who services our elders. She makes information and referral services to everybody from home care, including, you know, food stamps, free telephone, things like that. That's what she does. You're welcome.
Excellent. All right. So I'm going to say we're over that category. The next category we're going to talk about is total general government. Anybody to address the whole on total general government? There might have been a duplication. Okay, excellent on my part. What was the next goal we had about school? Thank you. Anybody to address the whole on schools?
This part, it's difficult for normal drive.
Yeah, we're having trouble hearing anything. That's people voice. Get friendly with those microns.
Interrupted by a case.
All right.
It's not clear to me where a couple of these items described earlier fall in, but I have to assume that they're under the school numbers. Number one, there was 1.2 million for superintendent administration costs. And I don't have any clue where that goes or where it comes from.
Well, we have the superintendent with us, so that might help. Come on down, superintendent.
Why don't you come down there?
Well, come on down and do a microphone.
So the 1.2 is the overall budget, the entire school operating budget. And that's the bottom line based upon FY17 to FY19. There's actually a reduction of overall to employees in that. It's a level service budget, which means we're just continuing what we're doing this year into next year. We made some strategic exchanges. So for example, we needed a humanities teacher, another humanities teacher at the high school. So in order to do that, we eliminated the seventh grade foreign language. So that's, that line item budget has not yet been finally approved by the school committee. Only the bottom line has been open.
It sounded from a presentation like the personnel and the classes and so forth were separate from the 1.2 million. Is that not correct?
That, I think that's the entire school budget. That's expenses, the employee health insurance for the schools, all the pre-孕 adoption, as well as the salaries for the teachers, air professionals, custodians, maintenance personnel, IT personnel.
It's not really admin costs, it's everything for the school.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Questions, Mark.
Excuse me?
Anything else?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
You mentioned personnel. There are proposed positions of four paraprofessionals. And I'm just curious where those four powers are coming from.
I think you've got to stay out here, superintendent. I think so. You're out there with the pocket drive stretched from my elbow.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question for me?
There are eliminated positions for four paraprofessionals.
We're reducing the paraprofessionals total score.
Yes, yes, yes. Where are the four powers located?
Those four paraprofessionals, we don't know at this point in time. Once our final students are assigned to the buildings, relative to, most of the paraprofessionals are within special education programs or supporting students with disabilities within classrooms. So it really depends on where a lot of our classrooms, their total enrollment ends up, and then we'll distribute the paraprofessionals.
Given that response, are the budget included 264,000 for increase in special ed?
Yes.
What you're saying is that we need the powers to support special ed. Special ed's going up, powers are going down.
And those, that particular line for increase is for tuitions and for students that are right now projected to receive their services outside the Lindenberg Public Schools in a private or collaborative setting. If any of those students were to return to us, typically what happens is we see additional staff here in the building, our buildings, being added to, to address that. So it's this interplay that happens in terms of out of district tuitions may come back in terms of additional personnel if a student returns to the district. So those funds, the school committee is very transparent, we're very transparent with that. Those are transferred in a public session and that's discussed if that happens.
Stay right there. Ron School. Go ahead, another question.
So, I'm done with school. I have another remaining question that I don't know where it falls.
Okay, so hold on for just a second. You want to address schools, sir? Go right, come right up. Get friendly with that microphone. Go.
Chris Menard, 672 Page Street. One question I'd have is how many additional personnel are coming in that are going to be on the pension plans? Votably, I see a psychiatrist coming in. Is that a pension position? And why would we then make a decision to go from an outsourced to a pension position, which we would have a long-term obligation?
Yep. Pension, just, the teachers' pensions, if you will, are funded through the mass teacher retirement system. There certainly would be liabilities around the health insurance for those individuals. So the decision to do that is basically just maximize the impact. Contracting out, counter services is very expensive. We understand that also having a full-time employee is, we actually are contracting out this year. We found that it puts us at a disadvantage in terms of the responsive and meeting the timelines that are required when these assessments are done. And so that's why that decision was made to move into the budget and find a part-time person that's a contracted employee that we can make sure that we have in place on a regular basis.
Right. So I saw that line that was like 65,000 in actuals in 2016 going to a budget of, we over-doubled that, if I didn't run math right. And then, and that does not count the long-term obligations of pensions and paying the pension funds and the like, so I'd like to understand that.
Want to address that?
I'm not sure which line you're talking about because the line item, we certainly put some projections out there. Anytime we moved personnel around, there's adjustments in those lines because, for example, we started out this year with a school psychologist that was also serving as a counselor down at the primary school and the school psychologists for both Turkey Hill Middle School and the primary school. So we made a shift this year, and that's when we went for the contracted services. The counselor at the Turkey Hill Elementary School needed to remain there full-time. She was going back and forth. And we put the school psychologist slash counselor at the primary, she fulfills both roles down there. And we put that position down there full-time and did the contracted out for a school psychologist. I think in our long-term projections, we're looking for more of these combo roles because in the school district our size, we always look for people that can wear several hats. And the design model that we're looking for is retirements happen and our staff change is over, is to do these combinations with counselors and school psychologists, particularly at those elementary grades. So you do incur health insurance costs with that individual and that's calculated in as well. The pension is, they pay their pension. The teacher's retirement is totally outside. They, it's a self-funded program. They pay their own pensions.
So I don't understand that. So you're saying that no one in Massachusetts and all the taxes that I pay pays towards the pension of the, the teachers?
Mr. Moderator? Hold on. There's not, you can answer that.
The teachers pay into the Mass retirement system, and when they retire, that's where their funding comes from.
So just to follow through on that, let me answer your question. When a teacher retires, the pension and the health insurance is paid by the state of Massachusetts, our taxes.
Not the health insurance.
Okay. So the pension is paid by the state of Massachusetts, which is our taxes, but it's not our Worcester County retirement assessment. So, so it's the, when we talk about an increase of expenses, the overall expenses, business salary plus pension plus health insurance, the pension's not coming out of the town budget?
But they do come out of our Massachusetts income taxes and other taxes that we pay. So the hidden cost aspect of a lot of these decisions is, I think, non-transparent to everyone in the room here. And I'm, maybe you can tell I'm a little opposed to hiring when I think you can outsource it in that, in that certain way. So, so my second question is, I don't know if it was two or three years ago, we were in a not-as-nice facility voting on the new school that we're in today. And at the time, I think the residents were led to believe that the overall cost of maintaining, administering, et cetera, this school, these schools, the middle and, and high school would be lower. And today, the first year that we're opening this building, I see a 6.2% increase in the public schools across the board. I, I don't support that. I think we're given a blank check to the schools here to, to increase cost to the, to the town. And it's, it's over now, I think, half the town's budget. And we've got to see some delta playing in here. I, I send three of my children to charter schools, and the responsibility that those towns, that those schools show towards the budget, I think far exceeds what's being done here in these schools. So I guess my question is, what is the additional cost over the last three years from opening this building to what we had in the prior ones?
Who can address, present this question about increases over the last three years? Ms. Collins?
I think if we go back, if we go back to our, the school budget has increased about five percent every year, five to six percent. So we have to do some additional research around that. But I think the school committee has been pretty specific in terms of their guidance to the administration, in terms of saying, you know, we're, we're not looking for 10% increases, we're not looking for 11% increases. But over time, it's been at an average of five to six percent that has been going on. And when we opened this new building, that's exactly what it was as well. I think five years ago, we cut 1.2 million dollars out of that budget as well, and we've been doing the 5% increase since that point in time. So, you know, I think within the town of Lunenburg, that we have had a very transparent process within our school broad-based budget. We've been very open to questions. We understand that people have, have questions, maybe different areas of opinions, but we always have, we start our budget development in October. Those are televised. When we're not televised, they're videotaped, and we welcome people to come out and give input. I know the school committee is very committed... I know the school committee is very committed to transparency, as are all the administration and myself. So, you know, if there's any question about the school district budget, we're here to answer those questions. And we try to do that in the buildup. So everybody knows when we get to this point in town that they have a good opportunity to provide that input to us. And that will continue even afterwards. So that's my recollection in terms of where we're at relative to year to year here. And the decisions that we make in the school committee either supports us or doesn't support us in it are pretty transparent and discussed in those public meetings.
I can't answer my question. I want to know the percentage.
I'll recognize you in a second. This young lady gave a chance to speak for a moment, and then I'll get back.
Carol Ashenow, 662 Page Street. And I just wanted to clarify perhaps, a comment just to make sure that people understood, that teacher pensions are not paid through the state. Teachers' pensions are paid, I think it is 99.5% through the teachers themselves. So when we say that a teacher pension is funded through our taxes, it isn't. The health insurance is paid through the town. But the teacher pension itself is not paid through the taxes. The teachers fund that completely.
Thank you. Go ahead, turn your back.
No, so I just, I'd like to get a percentage. I mean, last year, we were in a building that required a lot of maintenance. This year, we're in a building, two buildings in essence, that are supposedly to require a lot less maintenance. We have a, you know, 10% increase, I think, on our budget according to the debt services, I think is the line, right? To pay for this building every year. I expect to see that the budget in this area would go down because of that. That was the promise that was made to the taxpayers when we voted to build this building. And I see that, I think I'm seeing that the maintenance costs are going up. And I just don't understand that. And I'd like to know the facts. I'd like to see the data on that. And I'd like to see the data at the total level. A lot of sheltering, we moved it over here, we moved it over there.
Who can address this gentleman's question, particularly about the maintenance?
I'm going to ask Mr. Long to come up and talk about the maintenance budget overall. And it's also posted online for everyone to see year to year. All of those separate images are online on the school department website. But John, do you want to?
So I can talk about the maintenance.
Who are you for?
I'm John Long of Ludenburg Facilities, Ludenburg Public Schools, a resident of the town, 97 Old Road. So on the facility costs, from what we had to what we have now, I know when I create at this, for this body, I always said that, yes, the maintenance costs for a new building were going to be high. You have a building that was 99,000 square feet. This one is 168,000 square feet. It's a much bigger building and has many modern, but things that need to be taken care of, like elevators and sound systems. And we have a lot much more here. So there are maintenance costs to come with having new buildings. And quite frankly, the old building, in the last couple of years, we were not spending lots of money on a building that we knew was going to be demolished. Big costs in operating buildings are utility. And that was one of the areas we were very concerned about with this new building. As you saw in the briefing, we actually have made some major progress on reducing the cost of utilities in this building. This building is very, very tight, very energy efficient. Our going into this building in the first year, the school committee is very concerned when it reached what the reductions were going to be for natural gas. And asked me to put additional funds in the FY17 budget because we didn't know, we didn't really have any historical data on what it was cost to heat the building. We do have that now. So you saw in the previous slide, reduction for FY18 of 30,000. That accounts for two things. One, that 15% overage that they wanted to have in that FY17 budget being removed because we have the historical data. And secondly, the cost of natural gas going down. For electricity, you saw a reduction of 100,000. This is one of the areas we were very concerned about. This very modern school uses a lot of electricity. And we got estimates from the engineers of what that number would be. We've done taking some very proactive steps to reduce that electricity budget. And we have because we put in, we have a 350-kilowatt solar array that should go live in the next 30 days on the roof of the building. It will count for 40% of the electricity that the building will use. And we have a rate of 8.3 cents per kilowatt hour. And if you compare that to what you pay at home, you're currently paying 9.6 cents kilowatt hour. Anyway, that is a fixed rate for the next 20 years. We supplemented that with two net meter agreements, with one with Nexamp and another with a company called Greenfoot Print. And those are also reducing the cost to operate the building. That's why you see that big reduction of electricity. So there's some things that go up, there are some things that come down. We have a much nicer building, a much more comfortable place to be. But the overall increase has been very, very minor.
Thank you, Long.
Just one more important clarification if I can, and actually, expression of thanks for a volunteer that helped make this possible. Last fall, we had a tree litter after school at our Turkey Hill Elementary School. For years, we had camera systems, security camera systems requested on our capital plan for those. Because of the wisdom that the school committee last year, and Mr. Long, and first of what was in the budget for utilities, and then as a result of the emergency, Mr. Long, as well as the decrease in natural gas, those two projects are able to be accomplished with the support of the Board of Selectmen, they talked about it, of the capital planning committee in terms of ensuring that the safety and security of all our schools. So those camera systems right now are poised to be put in. I think we have a volunteer that last week was downloading cable. And as a result, you know, I'm sensitive, I have to add two words, sheltering because the transparency in all of this has been very important for all of us because those were big ticket items. They were both about $53,000. And that came from the energy savings that was a result of the energy conservation that Mr. Long had put in place, as well as just the school committee last year wanting to make sure that we didn't fall short coming into a brand-new building where we had a history of utilities usage. So we will continue to do that. And we really appreciate the volunteers and help with cabling, as well as the support of the community to bring these important systems into both our schools that did not have. And now all our schools have that technology that really does resolve and a good deal of conditional safety and security. But we all know, there's people in the schools and the people visiting schools that make the difference in terms of if you see something, say something. So thank you.
Thank you. Don't call away, Miss Collins.
11:54 Longwood Drive. One comment question, I guess.
Andrew.
This goes back to the original comment, which is, why did things change so much going from prediction of maintenance of this school to what it is now? And I guess that goes back to the question of visibility, if you understand. The previous gentleman said, you know, we had X number of square feet in the old school, we're going X times one and a half for the new school. Was that planned into the original proposal? Did we say, you know, we're going to go 1.5 times the original maintenance fees?
Mr. Long?
Mr. Long, I think I can shake your head. You have to walk there where we can videotape you shaking your head.
So at this body, didn't ask those questions. What's it going to cost to operate this new school? I provided those answers at the town meetings when we voted on these, on this project to build it. Those projections were true projections, and that's what we're actually seeing. So, you know, the increases in the school budget, you know, they're not necessarily attributed to maintenance. We're just over telling that. And you can take a look at the historical data on our maintenance program. And you're just not going to see the big increase that you're expecting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't call away, Miss Collins. There's no much more. Go ahead, guys.
Karen Menard, 672 Page Street.
That microphone doesn't work.
Put on.
It's probably better if you keep putting your hand, okay? There you go.
Karen Menard, 672 Page Street. Three, two or three years ago, I sat on the final committee. I sat up on stage and asked a question that I want to remind everybody about today. My question was, would we have to hire any additional staff, nursing and maintenance, for this new building? And at that time, the answer was no. And guess what's in this budget now? An additional maintenance person. So as they sit here and give us their story of, you know, what they were expecting and saying is coming true, I disagree with that. This is not what we signed up for. This is not what we voted for. I gave the same statement a year and a half ago in front of the Sludge Committee was, when the school was presenting something at that point. This is not what I voted for when we voted for the new school. We were told one thing, and now we're being told something different. So I am greatly concerned about that. And this is a 6.5% increase. These 6.5%, 6, 6.5% increases are, I don't want to say new, but if you look at what we have spent historically in the past, going back to 2011, there's a big jump in the past three or four years. And I don't know if that's warranted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to address that, or do you want to let this young lady?
I think in terms of the nursing, that those questions have been asked. We feel that they were answered. We always talked about that year that there was $1.2 million. It was about that we squeezed ourselves into three buildings, that we eliminated most of Mr. Long's staff. And we never did not talk about needing to get back to where we were. You can see it on the personnel charts. And we're not exceeding that. We're just getting back to where we were before we eliminated it. And we have to make sure that these schools are well-maintained. So Mr. Long has been very firm in terms of saying the maintenance costs in terms of the operating costs are not increasing. But we always talked about the personnel needed to do this particular, these buildings and maintain those buildings as well. So we've been true to what we have indicated in the past. We were trying to do in the needed services. Relative to the school psychologists and those kinds of things, those change with the changing needs of our students. We have for the last several years been increasing the number of behavioral specialists that we have, the counseling services that we have, the specialized supports that our students need in this world today to help them be able to be productive citizens in the future. We've been very responsive in terms of building those programs and services here for our students who are coming out of situations where they've been highly traumatized or otherwise have challenges with regard to behavioral regulation and emotion. And indeed, in those areas, we've been beefing up services. And you can go back to the presentation and look at the number of students that we've returned to the district because of building those programs in here, in the district. So those have been our responses. The world doesn't stop in terms of, we will always be responsive in terms of the educational needs of our students. We're not adding a bunch of administrators. We're not adding those kinds of positions. We're only responding to our increased enrollment as well as the services that our students need and making sure that we have those specialized services.
There you go. Go ahead, young lady.
Okay. I really want to inject with something to debate.
But you're going to tell us who yourself is.
Oh, yes. Katie Anderson Williams Drive. But I just wanted to say that I think building maintenance is one of the most important things that we need to look at because we have these things. And I just want to say that in regards to maintenance and whether or not we need to add it or take it, we build things like this, we do have to take care of them and always weld them, the maintenance. And, you know, I want this to be here a long time. I don't want to be in a new high school where I'm elderly talking about these issues. I want to be here. And so I don't have a background of knowledge in the debate of what we're discussing in terms of this part of the budget. But I just wanted to get up and say I always highly support maintaining buildings and would never want to see cuts in taking care of these because of the low tier grade when we see that happen to other buildings. So, thank you.
Anybody else on the whole lawn schools?
Hi, Greg, 129 List Street. On the school building committee website, there is a frequently asked questions section. And one of the questions asked is, will there be additional costs to maintain and operate the new building? And at the end of the answer, it says, the district will see an increase for maintenance contract costs associated with preventative maintenance for elevators, air conditioning systems, sprinklers, fire suppression systems, for the kitchen, fire alarm systems. The new school will have an internal external reset which will lead to these services. Added maintenance costs will be roughly $10,500 per year. No capital costs are anticipated for the new school during the first 10 years of operation. So if that adds any information.
They got the microphone here in the hallway.
Yeah, I know. In common, I don't know, I just want to say that I'm a strong supporter of the school and the teachers and the school system. I'm a little discouraged looking at a $1 million a year increase. Massachusetts gives you 2.5% for tax override for tax covenant. And it's discouraged when we see a school kind of 6% or 8% or whatever percent. But the problem is that, Mr. Long, you've done a good job with the maintenance of the buildings. Did you guys take into consideration that you went from three building to 2002? You got rid of the patio, you're wearing that money load that was taken care of the patio load since it's gone? And that's always a concern. And the other question I have is, every time I drive by here, every light is on outside. I don't know if there are timers, but I can see the lights in my house. And I don't know if people do some kind of balancing that. But that's only a concern every time, like I said, we get the 2.5% override.
So the funds that previously maintained the posios essentially were brought in to maintain this building. And funding for the posios currently is coming from the tenants that are, that work out of the posios now. So we have a flat collaborative paying towards the cost to operate that building as well as the program, cable committee, cable programs in there as well. And that's how that building is being funded. So the cost to operate the posios, when it closes the school, came into this building, operated this building. So that's that. And as far as the timers, yes, we are on timers. We shut the lights off at nighttime. But we don't shut the lights off if we have staff in the building. We do have some staff that are working pretty late in the building. So if you came by at 7:00 morning, the lights would be off. But if you came by at 11:15 or even 12, we might have some staff working in the building. And obviously, we do leave parking lot lights on for them while they're here and then shut them off after they're done.
Chris Menard, 672 Page Street. Just a question, is now a time to make a motion if you want to change the budget?
You may make it.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion and as a snowball's chance to you know where to be approved, but I'm telling you it's a set something to next year. I move to remove $602,000 from the school's budget this year. You guys got to figure it out. You're running a business. You're running a business that's 57% of our budget. And if it increases by 6.2% a year, and we have a 2.5 override every year, your venture is going to take over the entire budget. We can't find $17,000 We can't find $17,000 for a TV, or we can fund $1.2 million in the school. And I know the expectation next year will be $1.3 million, and the year after that, $1.4 million.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second?
If there's a second, so now we're debating just the motion to decrease the school line item by $602,000.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Menard, on the motion.
Yes. Please note that the property tax, state aid, and local receipts represents a 5% increase. We're not talking about a two and a half percent increase. So we have to compare apples and apples. And that still doesn't match the 6%. I'm concerned with that on the sustainability of the process. But the 1.2 million dollar increase in the school budget does represent programs, represents students, and represents the future of women. I vote, I recommend that you disapprove this amendment.
And I ask the selectmen to caucus publicly as much as you can for recognition. Mr. Long, you may speak.
I just want to address one of the comments about the percentage. So this school budget, including money, takes 57% of this omnibus budget. And if you look historically over the last 12 years, it has hovered between its kind of high of 60 and its kind of low of 55%. It's always in the same range. So the insinuation that if you keep increasing, it's going to take over the budget is simply historically not accurate, because it never has, number one. Number two is, we have elected school committee that has open budgets that I follow over the years, and I have the fullest confidence in the numbers that they're asking for are appropriate for the services and the educational needs that our students provide, and they have been doing so for many years. And I would offer that this amendment to arbitrarily choose a number without explanation except you want to reduce the budget is inappropriate and probably a little bit out of order, but as far as unsupportable. So I would recommend, as my colleague, Mr. Eubsole, said, to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Before you go, Mr. Rep, I'm going to suggest that the board of selectmen have their microphone open as they discuss it. This is an open public meeting. And Mr. New, and I were talking about that earlier, so when you talk, make your microphone open so that people easily can know what you're saying. And the same goes with the Facebook, that your microphone open somehow. We'll have to figure out how to do that. So go ahead, Mr. Combs. Do you want to refer to Mr. Rep?
Please. Right ahead. I'm 14, Town Council. Been in town for 20 years, started off on the finance committee, and due respect for what you folks are going through. Had a chance, had a chance during that time to start working with the schools and understanding what was really happening there. Recently, I've been working with the superintendent to essentially integrate some of the programs that are going on in town, conservation, stormwater. They were bracing us. We're starting to take the issues that we've got going in town, educating the kids. I had a chance to have a tour of the school during the school day. And I taught college for about 15 years at night. And all I can tell you is, what I see now is a level of engagement with our kids that we've never seen before. The technologies that we're using in this week today, they're, these kids are learning them. They're in front of tubes. They do design work that we have to hire engineers for. All I know is, I think this building and this whole structure that's been put together, and to Lottie's dear credit, has done a lot for our kids. It's not the same school that you remember up at the high school, you walk around and half the kids are staring at the walls. You know? It's truthful. I went in there and, you know, it was lunchtime. Normally, you see a bunch of stuff flying around. These kids were all focused, they were all talking, right? Looking at books. This is a different school system. This building has created a really unique opportunity. It has a higher cost. But what we're offering our kids are things that didn't exist before. So I'm with Mr. Long, I'm with regard to proportion of the budget, but there's nothing going on wrong here. In fact, I encourage everybody, come on over, see what the school day is like here. This is really a good school. It's a good school system. And I'm seeing dedicated teachers, and we're seeing students that are coming out here and they're pretty excited about what they're learning. Thank you.
Introduce yourself every single time. Go ahead.
554 Longwood Drive.
There you go.
554 Longwood Drive. Oh, deviate from the discussion about how good the schools are, because I think they are pretty good. My question is about the amendment, some discussion may well be answered by a term of the pick a number. One of the things that we discussed was the addition of personnel. And presumably, the additional personnel was to add our special education programs, to enhance those programs. And yet, we have a line item of $264,807, which is intended to send special ed kids somewhere else. In other words, the town is obligated to pay for special ed kids that can't be handled here. So we're spending money in two places. One is we're adding personnel, and two, we're still paying or paying more to send people out of town to get the special ed. We are not, so we're double dipping, as far as I'm concerned. So I would recommend taking $264,000, amend the motion to take out $264,807.
I'm getting there. So Mr. Martin, give me your number.
Number is $264,807.
I'm getting there. $264,807, from which line item? Or from the general budget?
I think it was from the general school.
From the general school budget, okay. Now, a couple of things can happen. Somebody could just second it that way, or we can vote on your motion, or the original moving party could accept your number. Mr. Menard.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
If I may. Joel Martin, Town Council. And just to understand the ground rules, town meeting can only take one action on the school budget, and that is to vote on the bottom line. In other words, you can only present a number, and then the school committee has to deal with that number. You can't identify a line item, you can't zero out something or increase or decrease. It's just the bottom line number.
And that's what he did. $264,807 from the general school budget.
That would be fine. I heard some discussion identifying, targeting it to outsource the special needs. For instance, we can't do that.
But to be clear, Mr. Martin, you're talking about that $1,000 amount from the general school budget.
Correct.
So is that, is there a second to that motion?
No.
Okay. There's no second to your motion. But the motion that's on the floor is to reduce the school budget by $602,000. That's the motion that's still on the floor. Now, I had said before, and I'll let you speak in a minute, that I want, because it's such a big part of the business of the town, that the selectmen and the finance committee would caucus using their microphones so that people can know that this is an open public meeting, you've got a right to know how they're voting. So we'll figure out how to do it, Mr. Long, if you're shaking your head. And they can put one microphone between them and speak.
Mr. Moderator, I suggest that we take a roll call vote. If we want to comment before you vote, we can. Otherwise, technically, I don't believe it's appropriate to do a poll.
Okay. And I'll allow you to take a roll call vote, and the guys can take a roll call vote. Although, if they need to discuss it, try and roll call. And then I do that. We're a discussion, okay. Sir.
Matt Snyder, Flat Hill Road. I'm prepared to special ed and being double dipping. My understanding is that the money being counted for those kids or special needs that the school system can't address.